Right.
Are we online? Okay, I'm gonna call this July sixth meeting of the Board of Trustees order for this board business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God. We're reading justice for all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we are waiting for our zoning or our development director to get here. So I'm gonna do a little stall tactic for a bit and then we're going to just do some of our regular regular business items. And then once Joe gets here, if we can, we'll get into the public hearing. All right, what's what's their timeframe?
Hopefully. But I can start now.
Okay, all right. Um, so skip down to the minutes. I'm looking for approval of the regular session minutes for June twenty second of two thousand twenty-two. Chair, move to approve the minute system. Uh, second vote?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, public comment period, Brookside.
Um, our next civic association meeting is the twelfth at six o'clock. Um, I'm sorry, seven o'clock. And the next event that we have on the calendar is um, outdoor movie night to be held on a school ground Saturday, July twenty-third, eight thirty to eleven P M. Um, the graders truck will be there and they're playing night at the museum.
Uh, Worthington Hills.
Uh, I want to say thank you to the police and the road department and all staff uh for their support of where the controls to like what events. For the uh festival, the race parade, black parties, anything else. Uh, thank you. Uh, I think it went off. Really well. Uh, sure. I know that we have a follow-up meeting with great committee and some logistical conversations regarding that. So we we will reach out to them after we do our after.
Okay.
Good. Uh, civic association does not have a meeting in July, has their meeting in August, which will be the second Wednesday of August. And um I believe that's it.
Uh, at Con and Rebelo.
Uh, F Con, uh, we, uh, I think we've resolved most of the rookie issues uh in the F Con, women, I use this area.
Yeah, I reached out to their um HOA president today and she said that she hadn't had any turn of the points.
I know there was a concern down there about uh work being done early in the morning and later. The
Right, our police department reached out um to contractors to explain the most regulation, the hours that we can be working.
Okay.
Uh, so I have this chair.
Anything else under public comment? Not this group will do that. Anything under zoning? Um, don't see anything. Uh, moving down the road department.
I don't have anything on the agenda uh other than we did receive good news this week. Uh, safe routes to school is funding uh roughly a thousand linear feet of sidewalks uh near the Brookside Elementary School and a hundred and eighty linear feet of sidewalks in Worthington Hills along Candlewood Drive.
Awesome.
That is great news. I am. Are you already working then on the e-glass communication or do you need help with that?
Uh, Luke, Beth and I were we were working on that earlier today.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna try to get that out this week, right?
To feed it out tomorrow.
Okay, we're on a tight turnaround on that. We do want to have something from the school district to quote during our partnership, but those who did work on that are the ones who obviously be part of the article. I know the Franklin County engineer was a big part of that. Um, the district forgiven us of all the data that we needed to make the application. Uh, and obviously the road department for spearheading the project and um, making sure that we got all the surveying done that was necessary for the basis for the application. So uh, which could work all the way around.
For sure. Yeah, um, and thank you. I'll take a peek at this if I can. So I'm thinking it might help if we if we can just do a little screenshot of maps with where the if they provided iron with the mapping and everything. So that will keep some of put a button H up and link it. Perfect. So, thank you.
Anything else for department?
That's all I have this evening.
And fire any mess?
Uh, trigger.
No, thanks.
Um, I have the report from a burn and fire last month. There were twenty calls for service in Perry Township with upper early fire to work at one was a non emergency or I'm sorry, one was emergency, non-injury accident. The other was a fire.
Um, I have two things as well. Um, first off, Assistant Pride Chief Jim Cock will be here at the next meeting um to introduce herself. Secondly, we have a prior marshal from Washington Township stop by and we got an A plus on our inspection and my options, which was great.
Awesome. Uh, please pardon.
Nothing at this time.
All right. Watching you. Watching you.
There's something.
Um. Let's uh, I saw Joe. Oh, and
Yeah, that too. Yep. It's heading our way.
Here.
I'm happy to wait for him for a moment.
Okay.
Um, and we can start. Yeah, he'll be here.
Okay. It's it's my body. Okay, um, so let's go back and um I'm going to um move to open the Board of Perry Township Trust and Public Area to consider zoning commission's recommendation to approve case number one five eight dash R Z dash two-two, which proposes an amendment to the zoning zoning resolution. Lipid resolution, if adopted, would add section four fifty to the zoning resolution and create the Henderson Planned Overlay District as a planned unit development under Ohio Rebuys Code one five nine point oh two one, section C. Um, rezoning thirty-seven twenty West Henderson Road by roll call vote.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Cheney?
Yes.
Mr. Rover?
Yes. Okay, we are uh in public. So a couple of things, um, just to kind of go over. Um, we know that um people that are here are obviously interested in uh this property and and the consideration of the overlay, but um we want to make sure that everybody here gets their voice heard tonight. Um, are there any Perry Township residents uh with us? I didn't see anything on the clipboard. Did everybody fill this out? So everybody here is is city of Columbus. Okay. Um, so we want to keep it cordial. We want to make sure everybody gets heard. Um, every speaker is going to get three minutes um to the case. I've got my speaker slips here. We'll go through those uh in order. Um, and then um we are going to start with um Joe Smiley, our development director, Pete Griggs, who's our township attorney. Kind of fill us in and breaks up speed as to uh planning uh what happened the other night and um and then we're gonna talk to the applicant of the applicant talk. And then uh the board had a safe question and then we'll go into the public uh public comment. That works. Yeah.
So what you have here before you tonight was the text that was uh reviewed and uh approved by the zoning commission trio at the uh running commission hearing. Um, it's uh been a work at Miriam, which is a lot of the uh Brookside P O D. Um, we've addressed many issues with the applicant uh throughout probably five to six different meetings and back forth, et cetera. Um, and with that, we believe that we've got the proper requirements in there as to what this development will look like, et cetera. Uh, what's before you tonight is the zoning text is was prepared by staff, um, Pete Griggs and myself and others that were involved in uh the response and uh our recommendation from staff is for approval. And with that, I'll kind of agree.
So again, you guys are familiar with the process. It's very similar to uh to Brookside. What you're doing tonight is is approving a text amendment as well as a map amendment that basically floats a a zoning district above the property. If it if it's approved tonight, uh the applicant will subsequently come in and file a development plan where um most of the details will be flushed out. Uh, that action will be considered by the by the zoning commission. Uh, again, much like we've much like we did with um with Brookside, there were a couple um minor modifications that um we are recommending tonight um based upon the comments from the zoning commission. One, basically, there's two. One deals with uh the fence. Um, there was a concern of having a vinyl fence. Um, I'm sure Mr. Underhill will go through it, but they have proposed a um shadow box wood fence uh instead. And then um there was uh some concern at the zoning commission about the square footage of the door requirement. So we went ahead and modified that to put um twenty twenty-four feet as a minimum. Um, but uh within the discretion of the zoning commission uh during the development plan phase where they could increase that requirement if they So those are the two modifications um that uh have been made uh presently. Um, and I think that's really it.
Any questions for Joe or Pete before we?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, can you please clarify if this is going to be a build to rent community or if it's going to be for sale single family homes?
Could be either.
So that is something that would be great to have addressed before approval, possibly?
I'll address that. The applicant has indicated that they have not made a decision based on the finances of which one it's going to be. And we're comfortable with the controls that we've got in here. It is a condo. Condo documents are a requirement of the application when it comes in. And that's the uh can be addressed by the zoning board to make sure the requirements are in there, that the property is maintained properly. It says equal use and court test.
I have to say, I'm
Well, we're gonna
She's hearing impaired and she's So I missed um, I missed the part about the twenty twenty feet or more for a door opening or something?
Yeah, the applicant proposed that the square footage for the front door would be twenty feet. We're reserving the right to increase that for a more attractive front door than a standard just twenty foot square foot door. That'll be the minute. That'll be the minimum. But if the zoning commission wants to go greater than that, they have that authority. And you know, just so this board knows, um, you you know, for your purposes, whether or not it's rental or not is not an appropriate consideration for you. Um, you you potentially get into uh fair housing issues uh and discrimination suits. So um you know, my advice would be that you look at the code, you look at what's been provided and not base your decision on that.
Could everyone talk up?
Sure. If you want. Yeah. Okay. Uh, if you want to move up, if if it helps and you want to move up for the prime, you can do it. We'll talk as loud as we can.
Sorry, I've been talking all day and I'm losing my voice. So I apologize.
Okay, any questions for board? Um if the applicant wants to uh then?
Yep. You have a site plan and we shared previously. Yeah, that's why I compared previously.
Now that I'm on one monitor.
Keep that picture up there.
Yeah, that's that would be my happy place. I think this is the the slideshow that you have lost on.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Maybe if you go to the site plan, I can remember which slide that was. There we are.
Oh, the one before?
Yeah, that's great.
This one?
Yes. Well, thank you all. Uh, my name is Aaron Underhill. I'm a zoning attorney with the law firm of Underhill and Hatch and uh Jake Petrick with the VP with uh Onyx and East. Um, luckily you made it right on time. Um, uh, you know, we realize we have a lot of concerned neighbors here. Um, uh, we had a hearing at the zoning commission. Um, uh, you guys can almost Google there. I've been working very diligently with um staff members here, Joe and his team to uh make sure we have everything tightened up. Um, uh, you know, we're in a zoning situation here tonight. Uh, proving a text, but we wanted to demonstrate um graphically what the site plan looks like. This is a site with twenty-five homes on it. Um, as mentioned, not sure if this will be a for rent community or a for sale community. Could be either. The intent is for this to be a condominium form of development and we made that commitment in the text. That condominium document is going to provide for um uh the condo association to maintain all of the uh the greenery and the uh the homes here themselves, the exteriors. Um, just as you would have, and and if if this is a for rent community, the the rental uh component would be sort of a master rental uh sort of situation where um just you have an apartment uh complex. Uh, there'd be an owner, in this case, Onyx and East, that would manage that condo association. But no one is going to um know the difference as to whether this is, this is not going to be rent one, sell another. It's either all or nothing proposition. And as Joe mentioned, um, it's a financial analysis that I'll undertake. We all know that we're in uncertain times uh with the housing market right now. So that will depend on a number of factors, but Onyx and East has a a long history in Indianapolis of of uh developing and operating and only owning um several different types of communities from traditional single family for sale product, single family for rent, multifamily for rent. And um this is one of the three projects here that we have in in the mix right now in central Ohio. Excited to be here. Um, this sort of a a lot and this sort of a location, um you know, it's interesting with the rectangular sort of bowling alley shape here. Uh, it really doesn't lend itself to a ton of creativity. Um, but we want to make sure, you know, when you're anytime you're building an infrastructure, you need to get enough density to pay for that infrastructure. Um, these homes are going to be, what do we think they're going to be averaging? Yeah.
Size.
Uh, price wise.
Value be north of a thousand.
So these homes are going to be very nice homes, north of five hundred thousand dollars in value, uh in in some cases more. Um, privately owned streets um and maintained, so uh no, no uh obligations on the township's park parts. Um, uh, you know, I'll note that in this area, you know, as you go westward, we have pretty heavy commercial uses and um we translate, I use the term transitioning uh last time. As you go to the east, we transition into more residential. And in fact, as you go eastward, the density gets less, but um even the subdivision here, relatively speaking, is is denser than the one next to it in in those surrounding it in large part. So um, you know, and as you get closer to commercial and you're sort of doing this infill type of development, um, you know, these sorts of projects really fit in well. And I we we feel strongly about the market and it's uh the proximity of these homes to uh amenities nearby. And uh we're really excited about it. Um, all these homes have a commitment of at least two thousand square feet. I think in most instances, we're going to exceed that to to a great extent. Um, and um, you know, really excited about the project. Uh, I think I'll turn it over to you, Jake, to just talk to you more about your company.
Yeah, so Aaron did a really good job summarizing. Apparently he's heard my spiel enough times that he can do that pretty well. But um you know, we, this is a is a property that fits the bill for us of the of these a little bit smaller in nature, um, you know, as opposed to the large tracks that have been a pull to your M I might build in, you know, a more rural setting. So we we think this is a really good opportunity to put an appropriate amount of density in this type of infill transitional location. Um, obviously, the the neighborhood to the east, which I'm sure a lot of folks in the audience are here as residents from, um, is a little bit less dense. But if you were to, if you were to keep going further east, you get to the development off of Chevy Chase, that density that was just done in that new project is very similar to what we're showing here. So there is precedent on the corridor for the type of density that we're showing here. And as we discussed, the homes would uh i- if they were to be for sale, whatever value of over five hundred thousand dollars, if they're going to be rented, they'll probably be anything for you know, between three and four thousand dollars. So there's a level of expectation there regardless of whether it's for rent or for sale that it's a high quality development and we would have to maintain it as such, or the condo association has to maintain it as such. So we'll provide rigorous kind of documents that ensure that it looks and feels like a great community for years to come.
I think in closing, um, you know, a lot of arguments last time about what city of Columbus plans say and whatnot. And obviously this wasn't one time in Columbus, but completely different jurisdiction. Um, so obviously within your purview and there's only conditions purview to weigh in on the merits of the project itself and without consideration of those items. But I think if you look at the um the area as a whole and how this fits in, this is very appropriate and we uh ask for your support. Thank you.
Uh, any questions from the board to the applicant?
Kim, just chair one question. So this is a private stream.
Right.
What's the width um from face to face?
I don't know, but uh as we've indicated to the applicant and everything else, what we've got before us tonight is the zoning. Everything will need to go through Franklin County Engineers Office for review of that. Same with fire, police, all safety aspects, snow trucks, everything else that that'll all come with their final development plan when they present to the zoning commission. They'll need all those approvals.
I think it is. So lock coverage is
Not to exceed sixty-five percent.
Any other questions to the applicant? Uh, hearing none. I am going to, I know that we had some people show up uh after we started um for you Perry Township by any chance, would you mind signing? Um, Joe, can you, Joe? Can you pass that? So that'd be great. Um, so I'm just gonna go with the speaker slips um down. Uh, so I have Tara Harris at five two five three. If you can come up to the podium, um, we'll give you uh three minutes. Um, plus or minus, probably more plus than minus. And um uh also I want to make sure that um everybody get the petition that was um everybody got a copy of that. Okay. Here.
Thank you. Excuse me, if you don't mind. Um, you also should receive the copy of a letter submitted by this afternoon. And then there was another one over here. More license.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll make those part of the meeting minutes.
Okay.
What was the nature of the commission?
It was a good uh letter opposing the development signed by
It was opposing um medium density develop and it was in
Eric, we'll get your copy.
I have a copy right here. Um, are you all ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm speaking today in opposition of the proposed overlay medium density development of thirty-seven twenty West Henderson Road. My first concern is the sheer density of the development. Per your zoning resolution four one two dot oh three one, the owner of a tract of land four acres or more may request the map amendment. This property is three point four one five acres, so it does not meet your requirements. There is nothing adjacent on Henderson Road to the property that would be remotely as dense until you get to Chevy Chase Woods. Chevy Chase Woods is three point six seven acres with sixteen nineteen hundred and sixty-seven square foot homes that are Columbus City and Upper Arlington schools, most selling for at least five hundred and fifty thousand and up to eight 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 hundred and eighty thousand. And I have from, I'm sorry.
So you're fine.
I have um the actual from Franklin County, the actual square footage. So it emailed to me today. So there was dispute of that. I have that for you guys. Um, this type of development would be reasonable and would allow our area to remain low density and keep the integrity of our area intact as well as preserving our property values. My next concern is the reputability of Onyx and East. They have not completed a neighborhood such as this in any of their markets. They recently broke ground on their inaugural development in Tampa, which is twenty-four single family homes that are built to rent. Um, and a vast neighborhood in Noblesville that is a hundred and forty-six units. We would be the first community, community development such as this in Ohio by this developer. Does Perry Township want to be the test market for this at the expense of the integrity of the area? I brought copies of many negative reviews from current residents and buyers of Onyx and East developments that I previously emailed to them. Uh, reviews such as, and I quote, "This project has been rolling on for years with disrespect to myself and other adjoining property and people. I would never recommend Onyx and East." Onyx and East marketing for these type of communities is the desirability of being within walking or biking distance to area eateries, breweries, shopping developments, parks and grocery stores. This neighborhood is not conducive with that type of area. I personally have to put my bike in my car and drive a couple of miles to a decent biking path. There is nowhere that is walkable. There are no sidewalks that stretch of Henderson Road. I personally went out to the surrounding area neighborhoods that would be affected by this development. I spoke with many residents of the area, Columbus, Upper Arlington and Perry Township residents. Not one person that I spoke to was in favor of the density of this proposed overlay. Everyone that I spoke to was adamantly opposed to this overlay as it would be entirely too dense of a development, three point four acres in an already congested area. I heard the same sentiment over and over. We do not want this type of development in our area. Congestion in this area is already a nightmare. Twenty-five homes on three point four acres is entirely too many. This is not just the voice of Brimwood. These are the people who will be affected daily and greatly by your decision. And we implore you to please hear our voices on this matter and ask and answer the question, would you want this development adjacent to your neighborhood and in your backyard? Thank you. Uh, if you guys like this, then that's from Franklin County.
Thank you.
Chevy Chase.
Uh, Mike Caldwell. I live with Tara Harris at fifty-two fifty-three Brimwood. Um, pretty much my sentiments are repeating what hers were uh about the density. And it's the opinion of all of us that discussed this over the last few days, that this assessment that they say it's a mixed use or ideal for this medium density, uh, this is not our opinion. And we are all under the opinion that the adjacent properties are low density residential. And we're the ones that live there. We're the ones that drive on these streets every day. We feel we have a pretty good idea that these are the appropriate uses to keep it in a low density uh situation as our street and the next few streets overall. Um, like she said, there were twenty-seven people that signed a petition that are Perry Township residents, taxpayers, voters. And uh we just hope that you respect the opinions that all of us to from the three different municipalities involved on this stretcher road, this neighborhood and uh take that under consideration, that we would be fine with the lower density proposal. We understand Perry Township reached out to the owner to transfer the land back to Perry Township. And uh, we understand this is going to get developed and we just hope you listen to our wishes and your own constituents that we keep something that's uh a little more reasonable than the proposal Onyx in these tasks. Um, in addition, there's some trees on our property line that are straddling the property line. We want to make sure that the developers understand that Ohio law says trees straddling a property line belong to both owners. And one is in our property, one is in our uh next door neighbor's property. So uh we understand that they belong to both of us and that needs to be uh respected. So uh like Tara said, some of those concerns from the uh reviews we read on Onyx and East, um, that's a big concern of ours. So um, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Uh, Kelly Ellers.
Thank you so much. I'm at fifty-two twenty-two Brimwood Drive. Um, I would like it stated for the Um I would like it stated for the record that from the last meeting, we have evidence that um built to rent was never disclosed. We ran the assumption that they would be owned homes, not units. Um and that when we talked about the values that we have um in our neighborhood from five hundred thousand up. Um to eight hundred thousand, that we were assured that these buildings, again like what you said, would be five hundred thousand plus up. But we feel that um that was not disclosed and. I don't know, it just doesn't seem right. Um and also we would like to be considered low density for our area. Because if you look at the overlay in the map, we are. Um there are many doctors and surgeons and very few people who live behind ortho neuro. Um it's not a transitional area. We're right next to a church. To shove this in there. Um would just be awful. We're not against the development for something reasonable that would fit the area. Um a year ago, Perry Township approved five point six acres Brookside Woods for twenty three homes. And here we are at three point four acres, a huge difference at twenty five units. It it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. So we're not against development. We would be good neighbors. We implore you to please, please think about our situation. And I am a reading specialist in Worthington. I work at Brookside. I'm thrilled about sidewalks. I'm thrilled about the nature and the beauty of neighborhoods with trees and nature. There's a lot of nature in there and the trees and to put this in, um no matter. How nice you may think it looks um would be a. Lots of cement and just shoved in there. And you can tell by the overlay, just by looking at it, that it doesn't fit the characteristic of the area. So I please implore you, please, as reasonable people, to think about what this. Thank you.
Uh John.
Chairman and members of the trustees and other members here. Um thank you for the opportunity. And my first point, uh I'm referring to the page that I distributed to people today. Uh the first point that I have obviously has been shut down and that is the the build to rent versus built to own. We were we were told at an earlier time, this is hearsay from me. I wasn't told directly, but I heard. Uh one of the staff people say that Perry Township would never do a bill to rent. And so we were under the impression that that would not happen. Um and yet we were not able to get confirmation from the developer. So that has been a surprise already. Um the the second one here, the th- this item has been ignored. There is a Franklin County um. Deed warrant about a setback from Henderson that all the buildings north of Henderson must comply with. And that is a hundred foot setback. And this is a special deed that was put in back in the fifties. And if you take the um on the opposite side of this page is a site map. If I could ask you to refer to that please. The. The bottom section here with the blue to the left. If you take a look at the one point two mile section from Riverside to Chevy Chase. And you can see first of all that it's all low density residential. Uh it's no transition to anything other than residential. If you take a look at. The the buildings that are to the north of Henderson. Along that corridor. You see with one exception that they are all set back a hundred feet from center line of Henderson. The one exception is on the south side of Brimwood uh has an interesting story. The Santos put a um house on a trailer. And on a Sunday, he took it from the north end of Brimwood to the south end and dumped it on the lot, knowing that the city of Columbus would never pick it up and take it elsewhere. But that was that was his way of getting one more house on there and that was done back in the eighties. But everything else complies with that hundred foot setback and nothing that we've heard in the discussion of the overlay recognizes that setback. Um I would like to have that recognized this evening as as um as you've instructed on the site. Third thing is the development standards. I think we are all of a common voice that we believe that this is too dense of a of a. Of the application, again on the rear view, the rear side of this page, you can see how this proposal. Looks juxtaposed to Brimwood and Slade Hollow next to Brimwood. And those two are the densest in the entire quarter. Um this is a factor two times that. And it is a drastic departure from that. Oh, last thing I'd like to address. Chaney made a comment about street width. And what we have in design here in the past has been a single loaded street. So there is room for yard, driveway to hold one or two vehicles, sidewalk and street. Sufficient for parking on both sides and emergency access. What has been presented is eleven parking spaces for twenty five units. If they go beyond that, they're going to have a hard time getting the uh. One of my the the fire engines, the the hook and ladders down and do their turnaround. Um Perry Township contracts, I don't have to tell you with Upper Arlington. The um west case is closer. And so what we find is when we have emergency services required on Brimwood. West K shows up first and when Arlington shows up, they turn it over. And if we have two hook and ladders on the street, we're going to have some problems if there's some parking issues. So my feeling is you can't have. I I believe they've got enough room here for about a four foot driveway and a four foot sidewalk. And so anybody who's going to park their car is going to be parking over top of the sidewalk. So not all the units, but on some units, they only have eleven spaces for on-street parking. They're going to have a parking problem. It's going to spill over to Brimwood. And we will, you know, appeal to the city of Columbus to protect Brimwood, to keep our spaces open. Um we need them as well, but I I do not see a tenable situation for emergency services to double load the street as has been proposed. Now I, some of these issues I understand are going to be for the next meet. But there are some constraints that I feel especially for density. That it's it's your purview to be able to address that. Uh we're asking for something that is commensurate with your low density definition. And and not the twenty five per acre which exceeds what they did at um Brookview and Brookside and other places. Um Chevy Chase has similar density, but I believe Chevy Chase also has duplexes. And so that mitigates the the density. They haven't posed duplexes here. They have short widths between houses. Okay, so I thank you very much for your attention and appreciate the opportunity.
Just to clarify, Chevy Chase are all single room.
Are they? Okay. Thank you, mine's.
Okay, um. The letter that will be submitted, is there one more letter that was part of this package?
I I gave it to you. Written letter.
So um this from Julie Holden. Her concerns are increased traffic on Henderson Road. Um currently very busy density of so many dwellings, possibility of rental properties. Uh years um sixteen plus of. Threats for threats for development while lack of upkeep to the property. And then zoning change seems sneaky way for seller, becker and developer to profit with no regard for neighbors. Um that's Julie Holden and that would be in our, um okay, so um. Thank you for everybody who um smoothes uh speaker slips. Um I'm going to open it up. Any questions uh based on what we heard? To uh Development Director Pete um or applicant.
So Joe, I know the answer is all right. I mean, a- all the stuff about fire trucks and roadways and. Building permits and all that. It's it's county, county engineer, county economic development, freeway fire. All that obviously will be discussed when a development plan is.
Right, very similar to the Eagan Development down on kind of Omanelli project down there. Um as you call, there were modifications made and required by the fire department and that parking restrictions, et cetera. We have in the text here that they've required to have free car parking on each site. Not covering the sidewalk or anything like that. Needs to be able to park through cars and that's one of the requirements they're in. As far as the fire, police and that type of stuff, that'll be with the city of Upper Arlington. And then obviously they work in conjunction with the city of Columbus and their standards are similar. And uh so that that will be handled as far as the question about the deed restriction. We're not here to override or say the restriction applies or doesn't apply. That's up to the applicant and what they're required to do and what they got to do with their title company and they're surveying that. Obviously it's a restriction of some place that's in place and there's nothing we can do. So we're not, that's that's not in our purview. As far as the trees go, uh I understand that you can have both ownerships, but the other thing is that if you want to take a tree and it's on halfway your property and you want to. Take it all the way up and cut it down, you can't. So um you know, the the plan here is to fence this community with a six foot fence um and wood cedar. Um a nicely designed fence, et cetera. So uh now if those are concerns, et cetera, like that, and there's a chance to save the tree, we would go through that with the developer and, you know, see what can be accomplished there. And I'll let um I'll let uh you speak to the resounding one that's in the meeting.
Yeah, there was a comment made about the size of the acreage. Uh that's where your current PD, so somebody is resoning to current PD. Actually in your text, that's the acreage minimum acreage requirement. This obviously is a brand new overlay district and it's not subject to that restriction.
So one of the things that I had a question, I obviously, um you know, we talked about condo, they have the condo documents that will oversee the development and then the enforceability. How the, I guess the question is, how does our property maintenance code dovetail into the condo uh development?
So your 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 property maintenance code will apply. So we can enforce it. Um but those kind of medium documents, um I mean, that's that's something completely separate. That's another layer protection, if you will.
Right.
Um but yeah, our property maintenance code will apply.
Yeah.
So we we have that as a backstop as well.
So Joe, I admit this may be for the app about the trees. I mean, obviously, if there if there's an opportunity. Not a tree, but I do like trees. I mean, but if there's an opportunity to save trees. Um and not diminish the product, um I assume that you would commit to looking at that and ensuring that that topic would occur. That's you're able to do so.
If I could, Jen, I'll address that. And the requirements here, they're required to present a true preservation plan.
Thank you.
As part of their application and that will be reviewed okay by the zoning commission, et cetera. And those considerations will be taken into place at that time.
Thank you, Joe.
Any questions?
Uh sidewalks.
Required.
Required um in the maintenance and replacement of this sidewalk.
Private.
Private, it'll be on the condo association. But. Chief Patrols go down there and say, hey, we got an issue under the association here. Need to do this within a certain number of days.
Yeah, okay.
You take the question or I just had one that came up.
Oh, go ahead and take it.
Um the question was about the road width and we said they had to commit to three parking spaces.
On the site.
So if through all your other things, the road width is not sufficient and has to be wide. And those spots are not available, will that affect the setbacks of the houses to the yard? Because right now it's twenty feet on one side and thirty on the other.
They they will not be able to get approval unless they supply three parking spots on each individual home.
That's not my question.
And if they can, the rest of it can be signed, no parking.
My question was, would would the zoning board allow the houses to be able to be built closer to the property line to accommodate?
No. No.
So you're saying right now.
The setbacks are in this only text and that's what is governing.
So that will cannot be changed.
If the only way it can be changed is if they're trying to save a tree and we're talking about one foot. That's it. That will be at the discretion of the zoning board. Somewhere in there, a reasonable discrepancy in purpose of saving trees, et cetera, that type of stuff. There's got to be a cause thirty feet wide. What's that?
If that road had to be twenty feet wide.
We we don't get into the width of the road that's between the Franklin County engineer and.
Well, that's what was my question, that you won't compromise and set the homes for the back.
And it it's not. Yeah, I I I can't answer hypothetically.
Well, you it's the question.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say you asked your question, gave a, you know, and I'm allowing, I'm allowing the question again. This is the next, you know, the next step. So um I'm gonna, um if there's any other questions for the Afghan or our zoning attorney. Uh any of the speakers. Anything? I'm gonna go ahead and uh close the um public uh hearing by roll call vote.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mister Jim?
Yes.
Mister Robert?
Yes.
Okay, um. In looking at um. Zoning resolution case number one five eight RZ dash two two. Do I have a uh do I have a motion to approve the zoning resolution? Um and the official zoning map of Perry Township, Franklin County, Ohio. One five eight dash RZ dash two two, um also incorporating the two changes of the six foot tall wood shadow box fence. And the door measuring uh at least twenty square feet uh minimum in areas such greater uh may be determined by the zoning commission.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution to amend the zoning resolution and official zoning map of Perry Township, Franklin County, Ohio. In case number one five eight RZ dash two two with two changes. As so indicated relative to the fence and the door opening. That's second.
Second.
Uh vote? Yes, yes. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
So I just wanna ask what is there, will they? Still? I was just trying to figure out, I know in other. Developments, there is somebody working with the residents with. From the network. I mean, is, has that been discussed today?
No, we, we, the, uh. The condo documents have to do with their jobs, we obviously will vet them, people vet them. And ensure that we have the proper controls and those. And those before the zoning commission, if, if it's not in there, we'll put it in there. And then we've got the backstop of anything that's not covered in there will be covered by our property maintenance issue.
Could we ask him to assign someone to be the point person on their end?
I mean, the city of Columbus, you know, I did work with us for the stuff right outside our neighborhood and we, you know, it. Goes a long way to some communication.
I, I didn't receive notice, um, um. When, uh, Mister Underhill files a development plan.
Yes.
My guess is they're gonna show up, whether or not that's a one night thing or not, I don't know, but. That would probably be. The time or, you know, we could reach out to Mister Underhill and have him reach out to. John.
We can request that they.
Can we?
Let's request that we reach out to them and see if there's someone that would like.
Let's make a request.
Be a reasonable source to discuss that, that's not an issue.
Sometimes, you know, minor modifications make.
I just don't believe that we should make it a request.
No, I'm, I'm a request, I think it's important and I.
And I think they are.
And I, yeah, I think we have been on. That side, yeah, too many times, we know what it's like. To not have communication and not have the ability to have something of input. Would we can see that something could be changed without impacting the quality or the value of the product?
Absolutely.
And so I think, and it does go a long way because people that move in are gonna have to be neighbors with those folks and it just. Makes for a better atmosphere.
Yeah, I think that you're perfectly fine in requesting and, and considering that we believe that they should reach out. And if it's civil conversation to have.
And gentlemen, you'd be great. You really do, okay, I'll put that, I'll even record that for you, Joe. Guys, you're great, you're a lot, you're a lot of good answers.
I installed a favorite.
I like the record, I like being on this side, but.
It's not an easy, look, we, 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 we have gone above and beyond to make sure that this development is going to be something Perry Township is proud of.
And, and so to be very clear, I don't doubt any of that, I just know to Ted's point, as a resident that has had developments going on right outside my neighborhood. It goes a long way to have.
And, uh, I've verified with the square footagees and the materials and everything else that we're talking, the valuation of the property is probably on the low end. Given today's current economic situation.
And this type of development, I'm excited, but this is the type of development you're seeing all over the place, you know, it's, I, and, and here's the other thing. Sixty-five percent is nothing compared to what a lot of municipal.
But again, I also get, you know, and I heard from city of Columbus from the board, you know, we all have to get used to the fact that things are going to be more dense than this happen.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't mean that it's not a big change.
Right.
And paradigm shift for.
Yeah, when you're looking at words right now.
Yeah.
And, and in fact, I, I, if you might recall, the, uh. What was it they called it, Columbus did the new community, um. It was probably in one years ago, due to increasing density, they did a couple, not they lost any, et cetera. Where they are on stage side by side by side.
Yeah.
Would have given this density probably of sorts of thirty-five to forty and that was being T N D is what it's called.
Yeah.
And it's easily given them thirty-five homes.
A very similar project was approved by the city, by the city of Columbus's planning staff, it was.
Oh, I don't doubt that.
Turned down when the pressure was put on council, but the, the staff itself approved a very similar project.
And we all know Franklin County is our engineer, fire and police are gonna do what they need to do. They're in a way, if they can't get in and get out, it's not gonna be approved.
They'll write me up.
And they have to get as residents, so they're not as familiar with that process as you all are, that, you know, you don't get. Right. Never know that works.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. I'll, if you need anything.
All right, Ron.
Going now.
What's it? I think they're waiting up, I think they're all waiting outside and jumping.
I think they are.
I'd like to, no.
All right, um. Getting back to. Getting back to, uh, we didn't have a zoning development director. Yeah, we were at development director.
Okay, as far as old business goes, um, I. I believe I copied you on the email today regarding. The request, the changes that we requested to the tip documents be reviewed and approved prior to our next board meeting, so hopefully that, those documents will be in a position to vote it. I would say that, uh, given the time that's lapsed and et cetera, that, uh, the board would make a decision that if they cannot comply with that. Then we have to seriously consider whether to move forward or not with it. And. That's pretty much it, that is there anything?
So, so can I ask you a question, wait, so it's really up to the applicant now to. It's, it's whatever their, the submit drawings and engineering, you know, for, for this project.
That's correct, and, and they, they asked how soon they could do it, and I indicated that, uh, it, it's completely up to you, but prior to. This hearing, they had no authorization, as it didn't exist. And that anything for the next thirty days would be at their risk based on a referendum potential. Um, so it's really up to them, but I did advise them early on to start talking to the fire and police. And the Franklin County engineer to find out if there was any major issues with their plans, et cetera.
Yeah. All right, Madam Administrator.
Um, okay, the one sixty-one, when I opened movement is to it, um, Chuck and I did meet with folks over at Capital Coffee, just to kind of give them just. Uh, um, some of the, the plans and maybe challenges that, that they're working through for the, the. The building on the south side of one sixty-one. Um, can you think of anything else?
No, I mean, it's just, it's just so challenging in that area, from Winworth Lumber to. Uh, Christie's Nails to, um. To the restaurant that's about to open, that basically they would go right through the middle of the building and. I mean, the BP, the U D F, uh, the. Uh, Baskin, was it Baskin, Baskin's Robbins?
Baskin Robbins.
Uh, it used to be Wendy's, but I mean, so there's just a lot of challenges, the only two good areas that. Would see some impact, but not much would be Capital Copy on the north side, cause they are setback so far. And, uh, Worthington did an excellent job of that strip mall of taking a lot, uh, right away and, you know, so. It is, it's a very challenging area, but we just wanted that property owner to know. I don't like talking about someone's property without them knowing we're talking about your property, kind of like, and I, I don't know that. Um, everyone on our calls got that concept, cause like, well, why do you wanna talk to them? Well, because they're one of our businesses, they're a property owner, a taxpayer, what, what, what excuse do you want here? So we just wanted to catch them up where we are, doesn't mean. It's gonna happen, but we've given them some options to think about, uh, that the group has thought about in regards to, uh. Uh, entrances and exits for that property.
This is the planned widening that we've been working.
Yes, so they, you know, that they got a dock on the, uh, west side that they use. And they said they use quite often and that, Joe, that when they turn the semis in, they actually have to stop traffic on one sixty-one, I've never seen that, but I'm sure it does happen. They got a truck that's always parked on railroad right of way, which they say they got the railroads.
Okay.
Handshake agreement, I said, sure, that'll, that'll hold up in court.
Sure.
Um, and then the group has been talking about the driveway on the east side of the building. And then getting permission from the strip mall to have it as an exit, and I said, well, that's, sounds great, but that's not an easy thing to do.
Yeah.
So, uh, Worthington is supposed to give us some contact information, cause they don't wanna contact the property owner.
Well, and that, that, that typically is private owners and private owners.
Right.
That's because you know, um, when they go to perform the take, whatever land they're going to take. Uh, we certainly have seen the drawings they've got right now, and if there's a minor modification here or there. Uh, it behooves us to get involved earlier rather than later, if we're talking about to be, that's something that we can talk about in the past. It's, it's something we can discuss, is that others needed or not needed and. Um, but the take and the awards that they'll offer, et cetera, will take everything you just said into consideration, crazy, you're required to take that into consideration. As to whether they're gonna interrupt the overall business, uh, activity there, um, such as the BP, one of the normal things is getting the, um, gas delivery truck in and out.
Yeah.
And that can indicate a total take versus a partial take, et cetera, so.
But, well, it's, it's just challenging and our, the only piece that we have is that little Capital Copy building, which they. They is used. Quite extensively to, for deliveries and. Distribution with their, their salespeople, so I just wanna make sure that they understand what ODOT's talking about and.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they are on the design, but this project, I believe they're in design at this.
They are in design.
So when we get to that preliminary, um. My, my advice to them would be to pull up their existing survey or get a survey.
Yeah.
And then be able to overlay the take and see exactly what it is that's impacting them and then start that discussion, like I said. I'm not gonna give an absolute number, but, you know, we're talking six inches, a foot, two feet that make a difference, then that's something I think that we can. Use our ability as a township and talk to the jurisdictions, et cetera, and say, hey, how about we alter this line, but he's be early. Once they design and they've got all the utilities laid out and everything else, it's.
It's done.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You're fine, there's nothing new on facilities tomorrow, no, I'm sure, okay. Um, I'm gonna skip over the citizen advisory board resolution, I think, um. Mister Chaney wanted to go into executive session.
My question for the board is, can we go ahead and just talk about the appointments to this, this board, we have, um. Applicants and I don't know how comfortable we are about talking about. I mean, there's, the audience is so vast, but it, so, uh, about how comfortable we are about talking about individuals to the board, I think we have twelve or eleven?
Uh, we have twelve people interested, but, um. But we are.
But we have, and it's eleven member board. So they're all good folks, I mean, I'd love to have all twelve of them, but then that puts it into an, an even number board and.
Do it all.
Huh?
Maybe we can just do an alternate of them too.
So we can do it all? How many, how many people are we?
Eleven, eleven. And they are, they're in the packet, right?
There's a list, yeah, there's a list.
Civilian, that's if somebody can't make a meeting and you alter it, good, and that way.
Right.
You, you're a decent chance one out of eleven can't make a meeting.
So, yeah, definitely, just period.
Okay.
Um, oh, yes. So. Um. So. I, I'm not sure what you wanna do with the chairman as far as going into executive fashion on this.
Um. Are, so to, to discuss the applicants, is that what you're?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Is.
Unless you're comfortable with the list.
Well, but if you're trying to determine who's gonna be the.
Ultimate.
Thank you. Then. I, I just wanna add, the reason we have twelve people interested is one gentleman, just, I just talked to him at the end last week and he hasn't had time to get in his resume. He's tra, he was traveling back to Columbus.
So Mister Chairman, I would request we go in executive session about that, I'll stop being around the bush.
I'm, uh, of all these, uh, candidates, I'm. Um, okay, well.
But then if we have to determine who's gonna be the alternate, unless it would be the one.
Yeah, like, can't we, can't we just say, you know, that, I mean, it's up to their group to decide what, what, I mean, or do we have to appoint the?
You have to. This board has to point the initial board.
It'll be named in the resolution.
Well, you talked about who wants to be an alternate, or if it was somebody that had said that, you know, hey, I'm interested, but, and then it kinda makes it inconvenient.
Well. Yeah, I mean, we could, there are some people that have said, I'm interested, I mean, if the concern has always been about time commitment and to be honest with it, it's a new board, so we don't really. Have the history of saying, oh, well, it takes this, so there, there's some people that have indicated that, uh, I'm happy to help. Uh. I know, for instance, is Mister Roper, I call it the Roper rule now. Uh, is that, uh, specific association president should be on it, the HOA president, so that's kind of a, that takes them off the list and onto the eleven member.
Well, I mean, and by default, we've got only one person from Brookside West, one person from Epcun and one person from Henderson, so it would make sense that.
That you have those.
That they would be. So I don't know, and I'm not asking you to say, but I don't know who has not submitted their resume yet, would it make sense to start with that one being the, or the. Um, alternate, since we don't have their resume in, that would probably.
That's kind of like, yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Who was that again?
Who was that?
That was Mister Navarro.
Let's, yeah. Oh.
He's the one that was trying and wasn't able to, I mean, I, I obviously just. We don't have that one in hand to reevaluate, so.
So.
So if you don't mind. Not me, that's, so. Um. Mister Chairman, I move to. Is this, let me back up, is this a committee or a board, because it's named.
And it is an advisory committee.
Okay.
Um, the resolution is establishing the Perry Township Citizen Advisory Committee and naming the following people as members to that board.
So Mister Chair. Uh, I moved to establish the Perry Township Citizens Advisory Committee. In name, uh, Jamie Seaball, Jeremy Ling, um, Ling, no. Travis Goodman. Jane Hopper, Anne Lamone. Bob Castle, Brian Steele, Jim Reardon, Angelo Lockhart, Matt Shade and Jerome Scott. As permanent members of the committee. And John Navarro as the alternate, uh, position of, I so moved.
Oh, second. Need a second.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he's. I thought you said we were gonna.
No.
All second.
Okay.
Vote?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, somewhere along the line, I lost my, oh, even my agenda. Yeah, um, let's see. Well, I guess actually, the, I did want to make mention again, I didn't have a chance to tell you, Michelle, is that we've done a notification of the. Second half of A R P funding is coming through, it should be here right around July fifteenth. Um, and, um, I just wanted to add that I would very, um, wanna thank the police department, the entire police department. And road department for everything they did up and, and the hills, it was my first experience up there and it's, boy, it's something else. Um, but to be able to keep, um, such a safe atmosphere and environment through with so many people and cars and horses and. Motorcycles was just pretty phenomenal, but clearly that couldn't have been done without, um, making it such a safe event if it wasn't for. Our dear road superintendent and chief of police, so thank you both very much. And that is all I have, thank you. Did you skip police or did I?
No, he had nothing. Right, Michelle, it's common, like, and it's common thing, I just, I, I. Every day. I get more and more nervous, all right. Yeah.
I just, I just said it'll land in the.
Oh, we got a drone, right? Oh, we got a drone, right?
Still not, not a whole thing, though.
All right.
All right.
Fiscal officer.
Request a motion to approve, they will in just first minutes.
Make that motion.
Vote, yes.
Yes.
And then also in your mailbox is the request for the tax advance resolution. Request a motion to approve the resolution of raising real estate tax advance for second half of the tax year twenty twenty-one, collection year twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion. Vote, yes. Yes. Anything else? Uh, anything else to do with the pause? Hearing none, I have a motion to adjourn.